Good evening. If you're here in the room, or if you're watching us on television, this is a work session of City Council of Avon Lake, the date is September the 2nd, and it is 7:00 PM. And at the very beginning, according to our new charter, our chapter 220, at the very beginning of this work session, there's public input. Members of the audience shall be permitted to speak once, up to five minutes on work session topics, according to our ordinance section 220 point 21 C1. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Central Lake Erie Regional Water Reclamation District, also known as Clearwater? Oh, we do have someone? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just give us your name and the city that you're from.
Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake. Nice to see all your smiling faces again. I got some questions. I pulled up the CAFRA for the Avon Lake Regional Water, because I want to get an understanding of what the current situation is, and based on this feasibility. At some point, there's an option to buy the assets at 74 million, but the book value is 95 million as of today. So I'm just curious how that valuation was done. I think I asked for that study, so I made a public records request. Also, there's some indication of some loans that were going to be assumed. There was no balances in the information that was handed out. It's the Ohio Water Development Authority, loan 7349 and 9170, and then the other one is the loan 5164. I have the CAFRA, and I have all the OWDA loans, so I couldn't necessarily correspond to it and determine which ones are which, but the financial statement shows for the Water Department, the outstanding loans for the sewer fund is 70 million, and part of that's current, so there's probably 3 million current. So that information, I think, would be helpful. And I'm trying to understand, you know, this looks like a joint venture to me. Three parties, we've got the county, we've got Lorco, and we've got Avon Lake Regional Water. And Avon Lake Regional Water is transferring all the assets. The other ones aren't, because they don't have any. The most customers are Avon Lake Regional Water. I know, I mean, Lorraine County, they have districts that they basically have contracts with the city of Lorraine to service a number of the areas. They're really not in the sewer business. I mean, when I look at it, you know, Avon Lake Regional Water is the kingpin, and I'm trying to figure out what they're really getting for transferring all the assets over to an entity where they basically get a one-third interest. They have one trustee out of three. The lease is $2, but it talks about assuming the debt, but when you look at the purchase price, they get the deducted debt. So you might as well say that that lease is meaningless. You're getting $2, okay? If you're paying it, and then you're getting to deduct it, then you're really not paying rent. So we're renting a multimillion-dollar asset, and we're getting $2 in rent. But the biggest problem I have is the fact that there's a fixed fee going to be charged going forward. And I've done some tap-in fee analysis, and I've been an expert witness. For 20 years, I've paid rates to Avon Lake Regional Water. Part of that was for capital improvements, part of it was for that facility that they're leasing. And I'm going to pay again a fixed fee? Doesn't seem right to me, okay? All the residents of Avon Lake have paid all those years for that plant, and we're still going to pay another fixed fee for like a tap-in? That just doesn't, that defies logic, okay? Really does. You know, we should be charging them a tap-in fee, okay, in order to use the facility that we paid for. Okay? The residents of Avon Lake paid for that plant, okay, over the years, and they're not, and they're just going forward. We paid for how many years that plant's been open? So I think that's unconscionable. That's a major problem, least on what I see in the proposal. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward? Five minutes on the topic of tonight, which is Clearwater.
So to follow up what Mr. Phillips is saying, you know, in the paperwork that I read, it says in 23, Lorraine County had a new idea, you know, they developed the Regional Wastewater Authority under the Ohio Revised Code, blah, blah, blah. We don't know any of these people, do we? Who were these people? I came up with this idea. It's a revised idea from years ago, but I don't know who Raftellus, I can't even say it right, is. I don't know any of those people. They say they're a world-renowned, they know, they know the industry, all those things. Well, we said that stuff about Todd Davis, and we know how well it's worked out, the way that he's represented the best interest of the citizens of the city of Avon Lake. So I have strong issues. As a resident of over 60 years in this community, my family's paid our sewer bill regularly, Rates have been down low because we have water at our footsteps. But the problem I have is, I don't think it's going to stay like that. All of a sudden, our rates will change, because everybody's greedy. You can get more money. Let's get it. Why not? And so I look at this configuration, that they're going to just pump it all the way from Grafton all the way to here, not disputing that it's all feasible and doable and everything else. My problem is, that's only a small portion of the county. This isn't benefiting the whole county, is it? If it's only running right here, this is kind of like our SWAT division now, the Eastern Lorraine County. I don't understand why, all of a sudden, we're going to shun out everybody else? Or is this just a smokescreen for what's going to happen down the road? The expansion, and all the fitting into these other communities where there might be more money? Who knows? Maybe some developer wants to have some of these initial costs taken up by this, I can, Clearwater, or whatever it's called. Maybe they can help them out in trying to get all the sewers and stuff they want in so they can build their development. I don't know how these back-room deals always work. What I truly believe is that the citizens of Avon Lake should be given an opportunity on the ballot to decide if this is worth it or not. They're the ones who should decide, and they should be able to oversee it, not three people from the commissioner's office, from Avon Lake Regional Water and Lorco. It needs to be taken care of better than that. I don't understand. Somehow, some way, this is like ALERG all over again. They're going to want to implode, and we're not going to be able to stop them, and we're going to say, no, we don't want to get sued. Just because there's an Ohio Revised Code saying you can put together a regional water doesn't mean you have to. It may not be in the best interest of the citizens of Avon Lake, the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Avon Lake.
Thank you. So anybody else want to come forward tonight on the Clearwater topic? Seeing no one come forward, we will then go into our work session. So many of you may have seen in the newspapers, such as the Morning Journal, the announcement of Water Reclamation District to flow, commissioners to petition court for establishment of a regional district, and we're here tonight for a work session about this topic. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gentry. This is underneath your committee, Building and Utilities, for you to introduce our guests this evening.
Yeah, so thank you, Madam President. So I just wanted to welcome our Avon Lake Regional Water folks to talk to us about this new project, the Central Lake Erie Regional Water Reclamation District, and the benefits, I'm sure they'll get into, the benefits of this project for the residents of Avon Lake. I'm sure that will be a part of this discussion. And I'd just like to welcome you, and Lou McMahon, if you wanted to come up and give your presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. This is very much a team effort, and has been for quite a long time. I'm Lou McMahon, Law Firm's McMahon-Negales. Megan Gettaker is from my firm. We also have County Administrator Jeff Armbruster, and Assistant County Administrator Karen Perkins, and we've got Counsel for Avon Lake Utilities, Tony Coyne. We've got the Chief Utilities Executive, Rob Monroe, and Chairman of the Board, John Dwanzik, and Jeff Duke from Raftellus, the firm, which we'll talk about. So we're very glad to be here, and it's something, it feels like we've been in a marathon for quite a while. It has been a long time coming, but we've worked for two years to come together with a specific proposal that we believe benefits all the users of the facility in a way that will be equitable and supportive going forward, very cost-effective going forward. So that's, that's our goal. A 6119 has to show, under the statute, that it is necessary and beneficial and financially viable. So we've taken great pains to look through scenarios that make sense for all the users, and that shows the financial viability. So we've got a short presentation here, and then a few other comments, I think. This is what we'll be showing tonight, and this is in the packet that you have, and it's also available on the website. The documents are available. This is a very open, public, transparent process. We want comment, we want to clarify questions, we want to show that, why this is financially viable and economically beneficial. So we'll do an overview of what a 6119 entity is, then we'll talk about specifically this proposal for the Clearwater District, what it still looks like, why it's necessary and provides benefits to the users, and the analysis we've done to show that it's financially viable, and then what the multiple public processes are going forward. So we know this is at the front end of your process, this is introducing us tonight, we know you'll have multiple readings going forward, but there's a lot more public process beyond that. So what is an Ohio Revised Code, 6119? If you think about a school board for schools, or a metro parks for parks, it's a, it's sort of a single-purpose governmental entity devoted, in this case, to sewers. Okay. To sewers. So the statute actually allows these entities to operate for water and wastewater. This entity that we're proposing is solely for wastewater, and solely for regional treatment and conveyance of wastewater. That's similar to what the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District model is. Each individual community owns their local sewers, that would be the case here. Avon Lake would continue to own and operate its local sewers, and decide who connects, and all the economic development questions that go with that. This would just provide an entity to do the regional wholesale, on a wholesale basis, wastewater treatment. So what is the process? The statute 611902 specifies a number of steps. We're advanced through some of those because we, because of the work that we've done. So one of the primary steps is to create the petition and the plan of operation. How will this thing work? To be able to demonstrate to ourselves, to the public, to ultimately to the court, what we're, how this is going to work. We've done that, those are the drafts that are in front of you, that you've, and that are on the website. Once the petitioners have declared themselves to be petitioners, which we're glad to report, as Council President did, that the Lorraine County Commissioners have already passed a resolution declaring themselves a petitioner to create this entity, and we're looking for Avon Lake to do as well, then those petitioners hold a public hearing, where we go into detail on, again, how this is all going to work, more than it probably will tonight. And then, once you have the public hearing, you receive public comments, you tweak, we tweak the documents that we have in any way in response to the comments, and then there's filing with the court. The court then sets an initial meeting, and ultimately, a final hearing. The final hearing has to have four weeks' notice before it happens, that'll be on the court's schedule when it does so. What we're asking for you is to become a petitioner with the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities, which I'm pleased to announce that this evening passed a resolution 5-0 to support becoming a petitioner, to create what we're calling Clearwater, Central Lake Erie Regional Water Reclamation District. This is to benefit the three entities that are putting this together. Avon Lake and the county will be petitioners. Lorco, as an existing 6119, cannot be a petitioner by statute, but is obviously a supporter. This has been a long time coming. 2009 was original efforts to look at regionalization and all the benefits that can come from that, from economies of scale and cost efficiencies. That was just under discussion, getting the county in position to have, not have a bunch of small package plants, or, if you will, a balkanized approach, but to have central and regional treatment to get those economies of scale. That was, had a federal grant to evaluate options and scenarios for that. That was completed in 2012. It was a study, a feasibility study, about what options were possible, and kind of sat on the shelf until '22, '23, and the county revived this effort. We had a meeting almost exactly a year ago, August 30th, 2023, at Lorraine Community College, where all the service providers in the county were invited to see it, again, if there was an interest in restarting this effort, and to look at scenarios that actually made financial sense. Because there was no reason to do this unless it made economic sense, and there were benefits for everyone. So that gentleman in the, in the center there is an Ohio EP employee, John Bernstein, in charge of their Division of Environmental Finance, and he talked about the state's support for these efforts. The state has a very strong interest in regionalization because of the economies of scale. Looking down the road, that increased regulation and the cost of eating those are best done in a regional opportunity, if you have to deal with nutrients or PFAS, as we all expect are coming, and you have to put on other processes to do that. It's best to have a broad customer base to spread that over. He talked about that support that they have, and their interest in this. So we had a big meeting, those who were willing and interested to explore scenarios that could work, and then they have to be defined scenarios, there are a lot of good ideas, but have to be defined scenarios that, under a certain timeframe, can actually be financially viable and produce the benefits that we're all looking for. That group worked together, we considered a lot of different scenarios. Only willing partners, who have come together, or could come together, should say that a 6119 can be formed, no one can be compelled to join a 6119. No municipality can be, there's case law on this, can be compelled to join. So this has always been working with willing partners. I want to clarify, because, you know, the county's efforts in particular to, to get infrastructure in place to support economic development in the county have been ongoing and multifaceted. You're sure you all have seen the press, that the county was awarded $67.4 million from the All Ohio Future Fund. The state of Ohio recognizes the future is now, and it's in Lorraine County, and awarded that, and that's specific to projects on the west side of the county. That is, Baumhart Road and related projects to economic development there. What we're talking about is similar goals of creating a regional entity to optimize existing infrastructure on the east side, among the willing participants who want to do that. And so legally, these are separate. They're trying to achieve similar goals, but they're legally separate entities. The All Ohio Future Fund grant has nothing to do with the establishment of Clearwater. So what will this Clearwater look like? So as you have, you know, 6119 has to have a board of trustees. The plan is to have those who are most intimately involved in creation of this to be the initial board. So there'll be a three-member board of trustees, include Lorraine County Administrator for a two-year term as an initial trustee, and then Lorraine County Board of Commissioners would appoint somebody for a four-year term. The Lorco Executive Director, as initial trustee, would have a three-year term, and then the, that board would appoint a new trustee for a four-year term, and then Avon Lake Chief Utilities Executive would be an initial trustee for a four-year term, and then that board would appoint a new trustee for another four-year term. So it's staggered and rolling that way. You will see in the plan of operation, there's no compensation for a board of trustees members. If the board ever would decide that it wanted to do that, it would have to pass that, and all the terms of the people voting for that compensation would have to expire before the compensation could come into play. So this is, this is, people interested in the operation of this, this is not some way to, to make money for the individuals or board members or anything, this is specifically to focus on lowest-cost treatment on a regional basis, to keep the cost low for everyone. Clearwater will have a chief executive officer to run day-to-day operations and help the board. Statute requires you specify a territory, so the territory here is largely the entities that are moving for this, obviously, city of Avon Lake, that area in blue that's, you know, near Grafton, that is the Avon Lake-Lorco Phase 1 Facility Planning Area. It's an area already served and under contract with Lorco, served by the Avon Lake Plant. There are two transmission lines, a pump station and two transmission lines that get there. The Lorraine County Eaton Estates facility is actually within that same footprint, even it's got a package plant that's there, it can connect to Lorco by, I think, like 500 feet by gravity, and get rid of a package plant, that's one of the great benefits that we see, because that package plant is under, it's under some duress, if you will, currently, and is facing much stricter regulations coming up. The service area, when we did our economic analysis, again, this is the area that's currently served by the Avon Lake Water Reclamation Facility, all right? This is the area that's already, there's a separate, under Clean Water Act, there's a 208 planning process, it's called, for facility planning areas. These are existing areas, it takes no change in that process for this entity to take over service, because these are already areas that go to the plant. When we did our economic analysis, it's very important, we basically have taken, I'll talk a little bit more about this, taken what Avon Lake does today in its budgeting, including the fixed fee and the two components of a fixed fee and a treatment fee. Those are in the, the treatment cost today, and Clearwater will take that over as Avon Lake has been doing it for these customers. Go to the next one, please. So how will it operate? Clearwater will lease the facility for $2 a year. That obviously is not the economic benefit. The benefit is to, to take over, part of the benefit is to keep the cost low by adding more customers. That is the primary benefit of spreading this as broadly as possible over more customers. Clearwater will assume the Ohio Water Development Authority loans and the facility that are out there, which is approximately, I believe, $32 million. So that will, that debt will go with those sewer assets to Clearwater. Clearwater will purchase Lorco's regional assets, that is the fourplex pump station and the two transmission lines. There's approximately $6.7 million of debt associated with that, that is also in the name of Avon Lake, as, I guess, the guarantor of that debt. So some $39 million of outstanding debt that gets attached to Avon Lake collectively will move will move to Clearwater. So it's a benefit to the people of this community that that debt will be with Clearwater. Clearwater then will contract with Avon Lake Regional Water to operate the facility and the regional conveyance assets. This is critical, because it'll be a turnkey operation. Everyone, no one will lose a job at Avon Lake because of the establishment of Clearwater. The facility needs all the same people to keep running things as they are. So that, that will remain the same, and that contract will cover the regional transmission lines and the fourplex as well, as it does today, as Avon Lake does today with Lorco. It's very important, as we looked at this, to be able to establish the economic case and the financial viability, to have specific scenario. There are a lot of good ideas, we talked about, and there are a lot of grand plans, but it has to pencil out into something that makes sense. So we took great pains to define what Clearwater is and what it's not. So the goal, again, of all this is to maintain and have available low-cost wastewater treatment and to regionalize that and get those economies of scale. So that's one of the primary things it'll do. It'll take over the regional transmission, and it'll take over the facility and the rates for the facility, on just the treatment side. It'll address regional infrastructure, master planning. This will be an entity, much like the sewer district does in its area, of being able to look at what are the best ways forward, where do we have redundant infrastructure. But it won't force anybody to do anything. You know, it can make plans, it can evaluate. Ohio EPA has grants available for some of this work, and just so we avoid some of the duplication that we're trying to, trying to get rid of here with this approach. And then it'll be in position to construct and expand regional assets as needed, again, into willing areas within the service area. This is very important, what Clearwater will not do. Clearwater will not take over local collection systems. All the entities that own the local collection systems, not only will be responsible for them, they'll collect their tap-in fees, they'll be responsible when there's economic development of who connects with what, under what terms. All that is going to be remaining with the local sewer owners. Avon Lake, Clearwater will not take over the NPDS permit. The operators, the certified operator from Avon Lake will be, still hold the permit. And, you know, in the event that it ever does, Clearwater exercises that option to purchase the plant, the collection system, CSOs, that the city has here would be excluded from that. But that's long down the road, if it ever happens, and so the permit and that permit compliance will be done by an Avon Lake employee. This is, the last two are very important. We're expressly, in the, in the plan of operation, disclaiming that Clearwater will have anything to do with storm water management, whether local or regional. You may know that the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District had a case that went to Ohio Supreme Court, that the definition of wastewater under 6119 includes the ability to deal with storm water, and they have a regional storm water program because of that. Clearwater, there are other storm water entities in this county. Clearwater is not going to invade or crowd out or have anything to do with storm water. Similarly, Clearwater will have nothing to do with drinking water. Those are powers under 6119. If Clearwater were ever to want to do that, there were a reason for it, it would have to go back to court in the process we're doing now and get an amendment to the plan of operation. So that's excluded from, from the powers that are being in the plan of operation. Clearwater is necessary financially and beneficial. The necessity of this entity as a, as a regional entity is a separate government, so it can focus on providing the centralized water reclamation and to maintain the lowest cost where possible, reducing the less efficient package plants that are out there, provide consistent, stable, and equitable focus on maintaining those rates that are low and uniform for everybody within the same district, provide some strategic flexibility to support economic growth where it makes sense, and provide greater efficiency in meeting regulatory requirements. We know those are coming in spades. Again, with PFAS or nutrients, if you have to add processes, you need economies of scale to make that work, as well as managing the sewer-related debt. That debt will come off, would move to Clearwater from the city of Avon Lake. The benefits flow from why it's necessary, why this government's necessary. Again, a focus on maintaining lowest-cost wastewater treatment with uniform rates for all users. What flow each entity sends, there'd be three customers to start, because it can be wholesale customers, there'll be Avon Lake, there'll be Lorco, there'll be Lorraine County. What flow you send gets treated at the same rate. You know, optimize existing assets. Like you mentioned, there's already redundant assets, and they're not performing at their highest level. There's capacity at the Avon Lake Plant, and that is going to be utilized on a regular basis now. It'll take out the package plant that's discharging to a creek and would cost a fortune to upgrade. I can plan for additional sewer service in communities that are wanted and are willing to have it. It'll establish the regional treatment to meet, as I mentioned, the emerging regulations, improve water quality, support comprehensive planning. Planning helps cost efficiency, it helps the state direct money to where it's going to make the most sense. The proposed district is financially viable. This is absolutely key. You know, again, a lot of good ideas, but it can't just be a good idea. It has to show that it's, it's going to make financial sense. It has to pencil out. So we spent a lot of time looking at that. Raftellus is, in fact, not just a worldwide, a worldwide-known sewer consulting firm, but they've been very active in this area. They did the rate study for Avon Lake a couple of years ago for their utility rate studies. They're very active in the Cleveland area and in Ohio. So they, they helped put the model together and look in detail at the current budget that Avon Lake Utilities has for treatment, and that, just that component, and be able to put that in a model that shows, even taking on the debt that is proposed, that Clearwater will be financially viable. One of the things we know that it's viable is we looked at the rates. How will, how will the treatment rates that go to those three customers be? Will Clearwater have to raise rates higher than Avon Lake would have raised rates? And what you'll see in the financial feasibility study is that you will not. That's the same, the rate curve is the same. What Avon Lake was proposing in its, in its last rate study was essentially 5% increases per year. Clearwater, with those same level of rate increases, will become, will be financially viable. It'll build up a reserve, it will be able to meet its costs, and those are with all the conservative assumptions that are detailed in the financial feasibility study. Again, that study was based on the last several years of real cost of the average flow over the last three years, so it didn't assume a wet year where there might be more revenue. It didn't, it, it didn't account for growth that we know is happening within the existing Lorco and other areas. It assumed the same number of customers today as it would through this whole period, and it is, it shows that it's financially viable. So again, financial feasibility. This is, so Clearwater, just how it works. Clearwater will be a regional entity. It'll send its bills to the three customers. People who today have, get their bills from Avon Lake or Lorco or Lorraine County will not see that, see that at all. They'll probably never see anything from Clearwater directly, because those bills for treatment will go into the retail bills that include the cost they have to collect for the collection system to maintain and build out their collection system. So it's just regional treatment. Again, all the, who connects, tap-in fees if they're, they're collected, all go to the local entities. They don't go to Clearwater. So this becomes very public. Again, we've been working on this in detail, and that's why, and we want it to be very public and transparent. I should mention that we did have, it'll be attached, if it's already on the website, the, we had third-party, independent third parties who did valuations of the assets that we have. So they're, they went into the financial feasibility study. We're trying to be as transparent and open as possible and receive as much comment as we can. We know this is complex. We know people have open, you know, questions about things. So the processes coming up involve a lot of public, kind of, we've actually been in front of the commissioners, there was some comment there. They passed the resolution. We had a public meeting just earlier this evening at the Utilities Board. They passed the resolution. We have, you have your process, which has a lot of opportunity for people to ask questions. We have, so the general overall process is we, you've already done step one up there. We need, you know, looking for the city to declare itself a petitioner. We will then have to have at least two weeks' notice before we have a joint public meeting, where we will go in great detail through everything there and receive comment, both during and before and after that. Ultimately, we file that with the court. The court has a first meeting, and then the court has, sets a final hearing and has to have at least four weeks' notice before that happens. That will be on the court's schedule. We currently anticipate the public meeting would be in late October, is what we're looking at, joint public meeting. But that's, there remains to be seen how this all plays out. Next. Other opportunities, this is what's available on the website. There is a website for clearwater.org. Everything that's in your packet is part of that. This is what you see when you, when you land on it, and some of the things that are on there are some of the things that you've seen in your packet, so people can see them. We want feedback. There's an avenue for feedback, I'll tell you in a moment. So you'll see on there the draft petition for what we would file with the court. We'd like comment on that. Next one, the plan of operations. This is, again, details, comes somewhat like the charter of the organization. So some of the things that we've disclaimed are in there, how this is actually going to work in more detail is set out in the plan of operations. Financial feasibility analysis, everything, where the information came from, what the assumptions were, how the model all fit together, be able to show, give us confidence, and that this can actually be financially feasible, is all specified in that document. There is a document that has background and responses to what we expect to be frequently asked questions that are, that are there to give some context to some folks. And then, this is very important, there already is a, is an email address, and I'm glad to tell you, we already received two questions over the weekend, Labor Day weekend, responded to them, as people were asking about what Clearwater's going to be like, what it's going to do to my rates, or, or what's going to happen with buildings, and we've responded to those. That's available now. We'd love to have people have any questions, and the public has any questions to answer that, we'll be very responsive to that. We will have those available, you know, that people want to see the responses to those. And again, this all works toward a joint public meeting where the public can ask questions and get details, and then we have to consider those before we would ever file with the court. In summary, Clearwater is necessary and beneficially. Its government by itself is the only thing that can take on the debt. It's committed by its plan of operation to keeping low-cost treatment and maintaining that low cost, optimize existing infrastructure, infrastructure that's in the ground today, and reducing redundant infrastructure. It'll improve water quality and take that package plant off. Avon Lake facility is recognized as being a very high-functioning facility in compliance with its permit and putting out a good, treated product, reclaimed water. You know, the name reclaimed water means they've recognized it as an asset, not just as a, as a function, and it's doing very well. More flow that we can get to a regional facility like that, the better it is for the entire county and the region, and can support regional economic development. Again, focusing on having low-cost treatment and having infrastructure available is something very important to this county, across the county. This is focused in a specific area that we could test how it would come together. Of course, as I mentioned at the beginning, just to clarify, because there's been so much press on it, this is parallel, but legally distinct, from what's going on on the west side of the county. The 67 million grant is its own project being run by Lorraine County at this point. Clearwater was not, formed, it was not in position to do anything with that, is not relevant to the establishment of Clearwater. I guess that's my presentation. Again, just a couple of things. There are no tap, Clearwater will have no tap-in fees. Clearwater trustees will make no money. The fixed fee that is in the proposal is a mirror and a continuation of what Avon Lake charges today. The entire rate structure that is in the financial feasibility study and the plan of operation is exactly what Avon Lake charges today. So there's no change in moving that under Clearwater, so we demonstrate that. Ultimately, Clearwater trustees will be responsible for this entity in the same way your school board's responsible for your schools and the metro parks, but it's got to work with all of its partners, who are the ones on the board. Glad to take any questions that you have.
Ms. Gentry?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Just for the residents, just confirmation that our rates and the projected rate adjustments in the future will stay as they were before this came about, correct?
Correct. That's the, you know, the financial feasibility analysis, it parallels what Avon Lake had projected. Now, you just have to, that's a projection. Every year, everybody has to respond to the realities. If you had a really dry year and something happened, or some emergency came up, any utility operator has to answer that. But in the projection, it's exactly the same, what, if Clearwater's not formed, what Avon Lake was projecting for that. And ultimately, what Avon Lake Utilities charges customers will be determined by not just the treatment rate that Clearwater charges, or that it, its treatment cost, but all the other factors that go into the retail bill that they, that Avon Lake charges customers. But on the treatment side, where it's parallel, it's exactly the same, what Clearwater intends, projects to do, what Avon Lake would have done.
Thank you. Mr. Cause?
Mr. Cause, yes. Excuse me. I have a, I have a few questions, so if you can just bear with me for a moment. There were a couple of terms that, if you're able to just define them, that were mentioned throughout the presentation. The first one is PFAS. Could you describe what that is?
It's a, it's a bane of the environmental lawyer's trade, but we can use lots of acronyms, and mostly it's to keep the other lawyers out from trying to know what we're doing. I'm just kidding. That's what EPA would say. PFAS is the forever chemicals, you've heard of that? So it's polyfluoride, alkali, genolivest. I don't know, it's a whole family of like, of the forever chemicals that don't break down, right? They're in PFOS, they're in firefighting foam, they're in, they're in clothing, they're in a lot of places. And, you know, there's been a lot of concern, there were, some of them were declared to be hazardous substances under CIRCLA in the last couple of years, and that's created some potential liability. Everyone's looking at how do you get that out of the environment, that we have those things? So I forget the chemical name for that family, but it's, everyone goes by PFOS, because it's four long words.
Okay. The other term that was mentioned a few times is water reclamation. Can you just explain what water reclamation is?
I will. And you should know that, I think we have a footnote in the one thing. It's wastewater treatment, but Ohio EPA recently just passed regulation to, at least in the certified operator regulations, to refer to as water reclamation. It's the same process. How do you, how do you clean sanitary sewer flow so it can go back into the environment and be reused? But the reason they've turned to water reclamation, and the facility is named that, is because instead of just doing pollution control, as a lot of facilities were called, it's to recognize it as a resource, and that water is treated to such a high level that it's usable right out of the pipe for a lot of different things, and it goes back into the environment and it's beneficial. So that's just that, it means wastewater treatment. But that is the new term, and Avon Lake's already adopted it, and, and the mindset that this is a, this is a valuable commodity. A lot of entities like Amazon and other entities in their sustainability want to use reclaimed water and not take other water out of the environment. So that term is really a change of mindset. It's the same as wastewater treatment, which other parts of the regulations say, including revised code 6119 says wastewater.
All right. I got two more questions, if that's okay? The next question that I have, we had talked about the three-person board and the initial setup of that. Can you just confirm that one of those three seats is a permanent seat that the Avon Lake Board of Utilities will have the authority to place someone on, starting with the chief executive?
Yes, absolutely. It's in the plan of operation, it was on my slide. So of the three members, the, the, if you will, the third one that I listed there that has the longest term is the chief of, chief executive of utilities. That person, ex officio, is going to be, have that four-member term, the four-year term. The Board of Utilities then would make that replacement after that four-year term. It can reappoint the same person, but that, that appointing authority would be with the board.
And that's a permanent spot for the Board of Utilities?
Yes, all of our permanent spots.
Okay. So if rates did need to be changed at some point in the future, if they had to be adjusted? So, if rates did need to be changed at some point in the future, if they had to be increased or whatever it is, is it that board that would be making the decision?
Correct. That board would make the decision about the rates, about what the treatment rates would be. That board at some point could consider something different than Avon Lake has done with the, with the two components in the rate, you know, and have the authority to set rates that would work for that utility, you know, and be forced to respond to running the utility, just as currently, you know, Avon Lake Board sets rates for, for all the collection system and treatment, but all wastewater. So, yeah, that's the board that would do it.
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to connect the dots, that there's a local, either elected or appointed person that would be, still have their input, one-third of that input onto any potential rates that would be increased. Okay, thank you. The third question I have, I'd like to go to Mr. Monroe, who's in the audience, or Mr. Dwanzik, if either one of you would want to take this question. The Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities, Regional Water, is established by the charter. Is there anything with this setup, with this proposal, that would conflict with what the duties currently are with the board, or diminish the elected authority of the board? How would your roles change? Should residents be concerned that the roles are changing? Talk to me about how the elected body, which has operated in the city for 60, 70, whatever, 80 years, how this would be affected by the establishment of this board?
Absolutely. So, the, the short answer is, the Board of Municipal Utilities still exists. We have sewer collection system that, that we have to operate and maintain. We have the drinking water system, that's our water filtration plant, and our water distribution system. So, the Board of Municipal Utilities, from standpoint of how they operate and are charged with the fiduciary responsibility of, of the utility, it, it won't change. So, the five-member board, per the charter, the way that they're elected by the residents of Avon Lake, will, will not change. The, you know, I, I think if you, when you talk about the lease agreement for the, the facility and, and the asset, you know, it, it's, it's very similar to property that was purchased with utility funds, that we lease out property for maybe a cell tower or whatnot. Again, still owned by us, but that's, you know, again, a decision that the board makes for that lease agreement. So, from, from a standpoint of a, of a customer, you know, as all, all of you are customers in Avon Lake, myself, and the five-member board, we obviously have the vested interest in keeping the rates as low as possible. And, you know, when we talk about many of the items that Mr. McMahon mentioned on, that we see coming down the, the pipe, you know, while Ohio EPA just, just recently, in the last couple of years, adopted the water reclamation nomenclature, we changed our name to Water Reclamation Facility seven years ago, in anticipation of that. So, you know, I, I think that from the standpoint of getting out in front of, you know, PFAS, the forever chemicals, nutrient removal, even when we talk about the outfall and the location of it, the, these are all things that realistically in the next 10 years, we're going to have to address, and some sooner than others. Right now, that will be solely borne by Avon Lake, Avon Lake, in the city of Avon Lake. With this proposed Clearwater, this spreads out those costs amongst other, other users of the system. So, from the standpoint of the board existing and, and their, their purpose, that will remain the same.
Thank you. And I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, with regard to the public hearing that's going to come on this, some years back when we changed trash companies, Mayor Zilka at the time arranged for that to be at the Performing Arts Center at the high school. That was a great venue to hold that at, so if you haven't already been set on a, on a location, I'd like to recommend that, sir. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll work with Mr. Monroe, too.
Absolutely. You know, we, one of the items that we talked about is, in our group, was, while the statute only requires one joint public meeting before the petition can be filed, we anticipated that we would hold that kind of central, maybe Lorraine County Community College. And from my standpoint, for the Board of Municipal Utilities and our customers in Avon Lake, we wanted to have a meeting in Avon Lake. We did just get word that there are some renovations going on at the Spitzer Center, so it, it would not be available during the next couple of months. So, we are going to talk about the venue, and I agree that I think the Performing Arts Center would be a good venue.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Cause? Mr. Shamir?
Yes. If I may, I've got a few comments and then followed up by questions, if that's okay. On the PFAS side, that's polyfluoride alkalized substances, so that is...
Substances.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And now, when it comes to the program, I think regionalization is a fantastic idea. But when I look at this overall agreement, I have a few comments where I maybe not, I'm not maybe clear on what is being proposed. So, I looked at it in three components. Who puts in more? So, Avon Lake Regional Water puts the largest asset and startup funding. Now, who gains the most? Lorraine County and Lorco, they avoid large capital cost, secure treatment, and gain governance with relatively small input. Now, who's at most risk? Avon Lake Regional Water contributes the crown jewel as, and may lose control of rates and economic development. So, if I, if I make that comment, I would like to follow up. We, we discuss a gain in users, but when you look at the numbers that were put up, so Lorraine County brings in Eaton State's roughly 480, Tyance, Lorco about 1,600, and Avon Lake Regional Water about 9,000. So, magnitudes, we're, we're looking at Avon Lake contributing 82%. Lorco, 14%, and Lorraine County, 4%. So, effectively, what we're doing is, we are going to upgrade our systems, but 82% of that upgrade cost will still be on the shoulders of Avon Lake customers. That's the 9,000 customers. So, again, with the concept of having a fair negotiation strategy that would benefit everyone, and, and, and I want to make this comment, I was fully for the idea of regionalization with the first presentation I saw months ago. However, when we discussed this issue last week, the concept of purchase really hit a really raw sore spot with me. So, we are effectively, as Avon Lake Regional Water, and, and, and the crown jewel, which has been built and, and maintained by a fantastic group of operators and board, and, and I want to take my hat off to you guys, is being put on, into a, whatever you want to call it, a consortium, where we put in the most, we have one vote, so we don't have supermajority, we are giving strategic assets, which specifically I will refer to as the outfall within Lake Erie. You don't have another piece of asset out there. So, if you want to go and look at building or putting in an asset like that, you're probably looking somewhere between 25 and $40 million. That is engineering, that is permitting, that is, even if you get a permit, and construction. So, as a whole, I think, at least this is my humble view, that when we look at this thing, Avon Lake should have a supermajority, one vote, we can be voted out by others, whether it be Lorraine County Commissioners or Lorco coming together. So, as putting in the most assets, we are at risk. And, and I, I, I've made the comment, I've, I've made the comments to Avon Lake Regional Water as well, that what I see is a better distribution of board power based on investment and short-term and long-term outlay, as well as not having a purchase component in this thing. Now, with that, I'm, I'm going to ask two questions, if I may. When it came to the outfall, what was the NPV that was assessed? So, the net present value of that asset, if I may?
Go ahead. Well, I guess we will share the stage. We've, we've worked together for so long on this. Just, Mr. Shamir, some of your...
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, my name is Tony Coyne. I'm counsel to, outside counsel to Avon Lake Regional Water. Just to mention some of your concerns, and we can get into even responding more specifically as we go through this process. Avon Lake Regional Water could terminate its services as operator by giving Clearwater 180 days' notice. So, I think some of your concerns are well-taken, and I think we'll probably try to more specifically respond to them. Avon Lake Regional Water could do that. So, if there is a concern for that reason, that, that could be there. As it relates to the purchase option, that would be exercised for a long period of time, and it would be fair market value, which would be a windfall to Avon Lake Regional Water at that point in time, most likely. But I just want to show, we put in some provisions to provide protection to Avon Lake Regional Water, and, and one of the things I want to remind everybody, too, the services that Avon Lake Regional Water provides now are to thousands and thousands of customers outside of the city of Avon Lake Regional Water already, or, see of Avon Lake already. So, I just remind you of that, but we'll, we'll take care of it, respond to those.
And if I may just, so the 9,000 still belongs to Avon Lake Regional Water. So, if you look at it, that's 80, 82% being brought in by Avon Lake Regional Water. And, and my concern is, at 30 years' time, there's a lot of things that can happen. So, when you have a purchase option, that purchase option, if exercised, would effectively allow no control over our future destiny on a piece of strategic asset. And, and again, I understand there are controls, but there are specifics that needs, I mean, there are specific things that need to happen. I have, I truly would have been okay with this if the purchase component had not been put in. So, this is, this is my heart. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for your comments. If I could, just a couple of things, you've mentioned economic development and lose control of economic development, and I don't believe that's the case, because who connects to sewer and has use of the sewer plant is, is still remains with the city. If you have a business that wants to come here today, you have to check with the utilities and see what capacity's available, and you can make whatever deal you like. The bills are still going to come from Avon Lake Utilities, and they can make those terms if you want to use that as a tool for economic development. That still rests entirely with the city. Clearwater won't have the capacity to, to make a deal on that, you know, have its treatment rate. So, economic development stays with the city, it stays with the communities that are served by Lorco and in those areas. Those are, the owners of the local sewers still are the ones who control that. If they don't want sewers or growth or that, and all tap-in fees, it's all a local decision, it's not a Clearwater decision. Avon Lake is not giving that up. In terms of the asset, it is an important asset, but have to, I'll suggest, you know, even though it's an outfall to Lake Erie, that outfall's economic value is based on basically low-cost treatment going out that outfall. By itself, it's not, it doesn't have an asset. It's the, keeping the low cost at the plant that is the critical component of that. Frankly, if you didn't have a plant there, that outfall would be liability, would not be a useful asset. It's tied to the, the plant, and the goal of Clearwater is to spread, is not have 82% borne by current Avon Lake customers, but to spread that, so, because it would be otherwise, if it's not Clearwater, it's going to be 100% for, for upgrades and those things. That'll be borne on Avon Lake by 100%.
Mr. Shamir, go ahead.
I, I have to beg to differ on the outfall. If you take that outfall, put it on a river, you're going to be capped, where you have that asset sitting at Lake Erie, you know, as the old saying goes, you know, dilution is the solution to pollution, and you don't have that capacity anywhere else. So, that capacity has a specific value, and that value's quite high. Now, if we're talking about, and, and I'm, and I am not against the idea, in fact, I am for the idea of regionalization, but I think that Avon Lake should retain, retain a major role and control within that framework. You know, you, you, you go to a poker table, you got a dollar, you're going to sit at the dollar table. When you got a little more, you're going to sit somewhere else. So, this is a capacity that is being brought in by Avon Lake Regional Water, and, and to take that and devalue that asset, I think is, is a short step. So, that's it. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it.
I thank you for the comments, and really, this is the whole point of the process. Thank you very much for that.
I'm going to turn to my colleagues to my left, start with Mr. Zuber.
The one question I have is in regards to the Avon, we get a lot of flow from Avon. How do you look at that? Is that in, that's in the 9,000 that you're talking about, Avon Lake? How is this going to affect Avon and that flow?
Mr. Monroe?
So, it, Mr. Zuber, it will not affect Avon. We have a, a service agreement with them to accept their bulk flow. The, the 9,000 number is Avon Lake. We, we just have a bulk master meter coming from Avon. So, the, the northeast third of the city of Avon is in our facility planning area and comes to, comes to us. That will continue. We, we may have to, based on the agreement, because it's decades old, we may have to adjust the agreement and some of the language, but they would continue to be served by us.
Go ahead, Mr. Zuber.
The only other comment I have, I agree with the original, regionalization process. I think that, from the standpoint, and Rob, you've talked a little bit about this, too, that you've seen a change within the last five years of how you are looked at and through the eyes of the Lorraine County. And I think that's a great change that we've seen in the county over the last five years, not only for you, but the rest of the county, and we're going to see it more as people start interacting more with the county, and we have a, a much better management of the county and interaction with the local residents. So, I, I want to thank you for working with that, and I want to thank Mr. Armbruster, too, for all the work that he's done in regards to working with the other entities such as Avon Lake Regional Water, and of course, the west side of Lorraine, too, but I think we've seen a big change in the county, and this is a big part of it, and hopefully only the beginning of those changes that we're going to see in the future, too.
Thank you, Mr. Zuber. Mr. Smith, comments?
My comments would really mirror Mr. Shamir's comments, but more importantly, I'm looking forward to the public hearings and hoping that people come out to the public hearings so we can hear what they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Arnold, comments?
What was the total of the amount of debt that, that the new entity would take on?
So, currently, there, the, the combination of all the loans, I know previous comments, like Mr. Phillips, had referenced the loan numbers, the approximately, the one loan for the water reclamation facility is a little over $32 million. There is a loan that, there's two of those loans that are encompassed in that 32 million. There's another loan, the third one, that is a, it's for the Lorco force main and pump station, the outstanding debt on that is 6.7 million. So, all in all total, it puts us upwards of about $39 million that currently is on our books. I, I did ask the law director if he could please reach out to the city's bond council to provide us with their opinion because of the, the bonding capacity. Obviously, freeing up close to $40 million puts the city as a whole, even though that debt is, is paid by utilities, it's, it puts the, the city in a much better position.
Mr. Arnold, continue.
And my, my second question, too, is...
And my second question, too, is it would be the sale of just the, what buildings, what facilities would be, it'd be the sale of? Not all of them, right?
Correct.
Just, just the water?
Just the water reclamation facility, the wastewater plant. Right now, the address is 180 Shields Road, so it's the south side of Lake Road, just to the west of the former coal pile property that we purchased last year. So that, that's what's, that's what's included as part of this.
Okay. That's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Can you describe for the audience here that what the facility planning area is, what that means? And what potential do we have for expanding this and diluting these costs over a greater area? And what is that capacity, and who is it?
Very good question. So the facility planning areas come from Section 201 and 208 of the Clean Water Act. Originally, when the Clean Water Act was set up long ago, there were grants from the federal government and, but the federal government did not want facilities to overbuild. So you had to set up, you had to have a planning area of what you were going to serve, who was going to serve where. So you didn't have overlapping and redundant facilities and overbuilding. That, it stays in place, and Ohio EPA cannot issue a permit for sewers or plants or anything if it's not in conformance with what's called a 208 plan. So that is a process, a separate process. NOAACA in northeast Ohio is the entity that handles the 208 issues. They, they can be expanded, they can be adjusted. A lot of this happens all the time. So that's a separate process. The good news about Clearwater is we're not changing any of those. Because of, because of how we've defined the areas and where we're going to serve, what it's set up for is we're not going to affect any of those boundaries. They're all currently served by the Avon Lake Reclamation Facility. Now, as a, as a 6119 regional entity, that entity has the ability to expand either its territory or its service area with entities that are willing to do so. If, in fact, the entities expand, there would be a parallel action. Let's say there's an agreement with another community to come in and, and be served by Clearwater, and it's currently under a different 208 planning area, facility planning area, then that would also require a change of that. It'd be a parallel process. So that area could be added, whether it's added formally as part of the territory, as a service area, or just by contract. They're allowed, they're allowed to operate outside their boundaries by contract, then that would require a change under the 208 plan as well. And those are done. It's a bit of a cumbersome process, but those are done all the time. Lorco has done it with its areas where it operates. Those change all the time. And they change over time because, you know, they're set up to what people can foresee, maybe 10 and 20 years down the road. But of course, we're, we're 50 years into the Clean Water Act, so things have changed over time, and there's a growth or expansion. That's, that's a parallel process that happens through NOAACA. I hope that explains your answer.
So just as a follow-up, so are there areas within our current FPA that are not being served by us?
Correct. There's an opportunity for growth, particularly in the Lorco area. I mean, you know what's available within your city and nearby, and there's still growth here, but the Lorco area, you know, has 1,600 customers. It has great potential to, to grow, and maybe it hasn't grown based on the expectations it had when it was formed, but there's big opportunity to grow. And that's a very active part of the county that's growing there. I mentioned our, our financial feasibility study did not take into account growth that we know is happening, as many as 400, 500, you know, permits have been issued for housing development. None of those were included in our financial analysis, and that's what we think is likely near-term growth. So that area of Lorco, again, adding to the benefit of expanding the rate base and getting greater economies of scale is, is ripe for more growth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments? One of the disadvantages of being last is that many of my questions have already been asked. Oh, you'd, okay, go for it. So just to clarify, when we're talking about the, so I think Mr. Shamir's concerns were the, the representation of Avon Lake. And so I know that we, we would have representation for, for the four years, and that term stays the four years, but is that, they can then appoint anyone? Is it necessarily from Avon Lake Regional Water, or is it anyone from Lorco or Eaton or?
That's a good question. So the plan of operation specifies some minimum requirements that are in the plan, and then the board can set its requirements. And then the appointing entity itself can specify its requirements, and they can appoint whoever wants. So, you know, Avon Lake Board of Utilities could say it has to be an Avon Lake resident, for example. It can adopt that. It can, that's within the appointing authority's purview to be able to do that. So if you look at the plan of operation, there's some specific things there. We anticipate that the board would pass bylaws to have basically somebody informed who would, if it's not the reappointment of the, the entity, the people who are in the initial board, and somebody who is familiar with wastewater treatment utility operation, you know, has experience. So that, that would be in, there's three levels, if you will, of protection. There's, it's in the, what's in the plan of operation, there's what the board would pass as bylaws, and then there's what each appointing authority would set up as your requirement.
Okay. So, because I know Mr. Shamir's concern was our level of representation, so I wanted to, I understand the duration was kind of trying to get there, but I'm not sure that we, we did. Mr. Shamir?
If I may, uh, my concern was not, there are three representatives. Lorraine County, Lorco, and Avon Lake Regional Water. My concern is not that representation. My concern is an asset-based representation that would sustain the capacity of investment. So, you know, when you, when you merge a company, the one that puts in the most typically takes more seats than those that put the least. And, and my concern is an equitable representation on that board and not a representation of 111, where we're only a third of the board. That's a very specific issue that I've got. And, and one question that I had asked previously that, I guess I hope that you guys will come back at some point in time. I would like to see the NPV on the assessment on the financials that you guys did. So I'm, I'm looking for the net present value that was done. I could not find it anywhere, so I would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Now I'm going to ask my questions. Thank you. So many of my questions have already been answered, have already been asked. I do have some questions of Mr. Monroe, and I know that this is a board. You already have the responsibility, the operations, so the reclamation under your belt. How much more time would this take from you? Because you're one person, right? Wearing many hats.
As far as my rep, my seat on the, on the, for a four-year term, and that was a question that my board members asked of me as well. Obviously, we're, we're not going to be intimately involved in the day-to-day operations of, of the entity. The three-member board isn't. Similar to our Board of Municipal Utilities, they have, we have staff to handle that. So initially, with Clearwater as an entity that's doing bulk sewer treatment and conveyance, again, there's three customers, three bills. And again,
Wholesale.
Wholesale. So from the master planning standpoint, that, that's going to fall on the Chief Executive Officer that would, that would be hired. Initially, I mean, that could even look like a part-time position on the day-to-day operations, to be honest with you. So from the board's standpoint, obviously, we would have, you know, board meetings. It may be twice a month, it may be once a month. You know, if you look at other districts that are formed under the Ohio Revise Code, they, they meet monthly. You know, so again, that, that would be up to the board as part of their, their bylaws.
Stay up here. I have another question that this leads into. So presently, we have employees working at the reclamation plant. And those employees would no longer be Avon Lake Regional Water employees, correct? They would become Clearwater employees?
No, they would remain Avon Lake Regional Water employees.
Because you would be a subcontract under Clearwater?
Yes.
So therefore, the finances would be the same to the finance department, and the budgeting would be the same through your board?
Correct.
And the hiring would be the same through your board?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, and a good example of that is we currently have that. We have the eastern transmission lines on the water side that our consortium contracts us to be the contract operator. So our employees, Avon Lake Regional Water employees, handle that. Lorco, under our cooperative agreement, they contract us to operate their system. They have one employee, they have an executive director. So we currently already have that, that set up.
So I'm going to talk about reclamation, which is not my area of expertise, but I have traveled through Texas. And there are some communities in Texas that take the reclamation water and turn it into drinking water. Is that a goal for Clearwater?
Not specifically, but I, I know that Mr. McMahon can speak to in these areas of the country that are, let's call them water-starved. Water reclamation, and you may hear the, the term, the purple pipe that they're putting in, you know, the reclamation, say, for instance of economic development. Water-intensive entity comes in, commercial or industrial facility, and they, they, they might not need potable drinking water for their process, but reclaimed water, they, they could. So it, it provides them an, an alternative to get the, the resource they need, but it also takes off the strain of the potable drinking water system. So it's not, it's not a priority of Clearwater, so to speak, but that is in the industry, that, that is something that is.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn over to Mr. McMahon and also to Mr. Coy. So the next meeting, the CCM, we have a couple of documents in front of us. Will you be staying here with us through this, the collective committee meeting? Because the first document that we have that will be coming out of Ms. Gentry's committee speaks to the resolution. Then after the resolution, there's a letter of intent to enter into a ground lease for the facility. Will you be speaking to, to that? Can you speak to that now so that we have an idea of what we're going into?
Uh, I prefer, actually, to do it.
To wait?
Yes.
Okay. And then the next one is Cooperative Service Agreement. Okay? I'm just looking at the documents that were in our packet.
Correct.
The work plan, that includes the work plan. And then the financial plan. Okay, so we'll wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you bringing that up, because that is precisely the process that we want. We want the feedback. We want to know what the concerns are, what questions are, and any of the documents. These are all drafts, right? This is part of the public process, and when we go into a public meeting, we'll take all comments on big-picture issues and structure and, and wording issues. So be glad to work through all that.
Thank you. I, too, am very much in favor of regionalization when it makes sense. And to me, this makes sense. Makes sense now. It also makes sense for the future and the future growth. And I want to thank Mr. Armbruster, because I know that you've had, you've been like a spider with all the different parts and pieces trying to pull this together for quite some time. And it goes back a number of years, and it's finally coming together, I hope, and I, I think you're going to have the support that, that you need. There's a few areas that might need tweaked along the way, and that's why we're going through the process, right?
Absolutely.
Right. Any further questions? If not, then I'm going to close the work session. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
It'll be noted that it is 8:20. Okay, we're going to open up the rescheduled collective committee meeting. It's rescheduled because yesterday was Labor Day. I hope everybody had a great weekend. It is September the 2nd, and we're going to open it up for public input immediately. Members of the audience shall be permitted to speak once, up to five minutes on any topic according to our ordinance, Section 220.21B as in Bob, 1. And we have somebody that's coming up to the podium now. Just give us your name and see that you're from.
Madam President, my name is Robert Baker. I'm a resident of Avon Lake. Last week, I brought forth two issues and requests for intervention. One item is currently in process of discussion and review between myself, Mr. Liskovick, Mr. Strasborn, Councilmember Shamir, and Gentry, which will soon be Mr. Koz as well. The other item involved four issues of compounding property damage caused by the portside developer COF, starting in 2018, which is now under Pulte ownership, along with the continued failure by a developer to adhere mounding installation agreement made by, between myself, COF, planning, and council. The noted items have been under city review and control for seven years and three years, respectively. Over the year, many official, over the years, many officials have been assigned to these issues. The, the list is continually growing. Having been assigned these issues, always promising that the issues would be fixed, that agreements would be upheld, and that all items be well-documented for the next person. Each time a new official is assigned, I'm forced to start over, prove the issues, and provide the city most times with their own documentation because it either becomes inaccessible or missing. The latest city official has been assigned for 10 months now, and we have been working together. Expectations from a May meeting were that the city would determine who's going to do the work. So we reached a point where essentially, who's going to do the work? COF or Pulte? And that the follow-up email would be received in two weeks. Unfortunately, neither have occurred at this point, and I ask, apologize for having, coming every week to do this, but I'm hoping at some point I could get the answer of, would you or anyone here be able to provide me with an answer as to when I can finally expect resolution and relief to occur on these matters?
I'm going to go down to our staff. To Mr. Mayor, do you have any input that you have, information on this?
So Mr. Baker and I are going to meet on Thursday at 3 o'clock to go over the high level. I think Mr. Liskovick's probably been more directly involved if you want to respond to some of that.
Mr. Liskovick?
Sure. So with that, obviously, there's, there's items that still need to be flushed out, we'll say. I've been in contact with other staff members that may have more history on it and am working to try to give you a resolution on it. It's just, unfortunately, it takes time and resources to get there. But we want to try to do it as quickly as possible.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shamir?
I've been working with Mr. Baker now for about 10 months on the issue, and we've gone back and forth. We went, I mean, there's been a whole slew of emails.
Excuse me, sir. Could you please take your conversations outside?
I'm very sorry.
Because it's taking over the, the television network. Thank you.
So effectively, I recommended that Mr. Baker submit his concerns to Mr. Liskovick, and that was, um, six months ago, seven months ago?
We started discussions in October after the current city engineer that it was turned over to by the Public Works Director, Mr. Brewbaker, turned it over to the current city engineer. The city engineer met with me, Mr. Brewbaker, and asked me to submit these in writing. I submitted all this in writing, and I never heard back from him. So I've never received a response from that email. Then it was later, Mayor Speckel came on, and it was passed on to Mr. Liskovick when he came on.
So if I may close this out on my side. So I do understand Mr. Baker's frustration, because he's been going back and forth with this issue now for two years, if not longer.
2018 was the first notice of violation.
So, and that documentation is with him. So if anyone needs to, I mean, I've, I've had the eye pain of having to go through quite a bit of that documentation. So that, that documentation resides with Mr. Baker, and I would recommend, I mean, if you don't have it, he can forward you that documentation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Liskovick has it all. Yes, thank you.
Hang on just a second. We have a sound. It's just, air? Okay, all right. Go ahead.
I've, I'm just, I've been looking for the, the same thing since the beginning, is simply a punch list? Or even Mr. Liskovick said, has anybody along the way given you anything? And no. That promises, hopes and dreams, thoughts and prayers is what I've gotten.
Looks like Thursday's going to be a good day to meet.
I hope so. Thank you.
Anybody else, any topic, come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Gerald Phillips, Avon Lake. My favorite topic, Avon Lake Regional Water. To answer Mr. Cost's question about the Board of Utilities, it'll be the same as far as the water operations, but we'll have no control over the wastewater or reclamation. So we lose the right to vote for people on this entity, where we have the right now for five people. So we do lose control. We lose control because we're only going to have one-third vote. It's not going to change, as Mr. Shamir did, so we lose control. As far as economies of scale, I'm a CPA, and I have a hard time understanding how we're going to get economies of scale. Because LARCO, we have a contract with them, it's being served. You add what's being done by Avon Lake, that's 96%. How much economy of scale are we going to get by 4%? All right? And we can contract with them and don't have to enter into this agreement. We can just contract. We're contracting with LARCO. We can contract with the with the commissioners. The commissioners, right now, contract with Lorain. They do. Lorain treats a lot of the townships that the commissioners are responsible for. The debt is $32 million. Purchase price is 74. That's going to be paid off, so that gives us $42 million. And any improvements they make in 30 years is going to be subtracted from it. And you know what the purchase price could be? Zero. Zero. Zero, and we're giving away an asset. The last time I'd seen a transaction like this was Lakewood Hospital, when they did a lease for a dollar, $30 million asset. You know, being regional is great, but it's got to be a fair deal. This is a terrible deal for Avon Lake Regional Water. They're the best wastewater treatment thing in northeast Ohio. And what are we getting for it? Minority interest, giving all our assets away. What are we getting? I would never advise my client to do that, you know, get something for it. We're going to lose control. As far as rates, projecting 5% rates, Mr. Monroe, four months ago, five months ago, said, "We don't have to raise the rates for 2025, because it's done efficiently." All right? What economies of scale we're going to get? He's already operating it efficiently, mean and lean. What are we going to get? What? We're going to save what, 2 cents? I don't see where we're going to have economies of scale. I really don't. Now, you look at the feasibility study, and they project revenues, and then they project expenses and debt. And I looked at the cash flow for the five years. $647,640, 528, 532, and 563, cash flow for the five years. I did a calculation based on the Avon Lake Regional Water for 2023. Know what the cash flow was? $2.9 million. Lot of difference, okay? $2.9 million. Take a look. If you haven't looked at the CAFRA for the city of Avon Lake, you better get one. And look at the pages for the proprietary funds, the Water Department and the Sort Department, okay? And look at them. You can't vote on this without that. We don't have bylaws, we don't have an operating agreement, and I don't know if this entity is incorporated or not. Those are the documents, before you enter into it, you better know what you're getting into. Those are the frameworks of the documents that will tell what Avon Lake Regional Water is getting and what they're not getting, what they can do or can't do. You've got to have those documents. If you vote on that with it, without those, my favorite saying, legislative malpractice. You know, you're not doing due diligence. So do your job, make sure you get a good deal, and do it properly, you know? 20 years I paid into the to the facility. I want a good deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Looking around.
William Zimmerman. So as an outsider to the water company, I've had some issues, I've talked, discussed matters with Mr. Monroe. But we never discussed anything about this. Now, Avon Lake has had a wonderful reputation of having a good water company, so much so that a company in Korea decided to select us to start a new process of chlorinating water. I think that that's remarkable, that a company in Korea would pick little Avon Lake. They obviously saw something. So my question becomes, why do we need to help LARCO? Because that's what we're really doing. This project is going to bail them out. I don't think that that's a necessity. The gentleman puts up there that this project is a necessity. It's not. It's not a necessity. Those of us who live here in Avon Lake could continue to live here and have our regional water taken care of the way it is. The other citizens in Lorain County could figure it out. They could get grants, they could get more money, they could find an investor who would be willing to help these other cities in our county. I don't think that that's our problem. As Mr. Phillips says, we've paid into the system for a long time. I've been a resident of the city for over 60 years. We've paid a long time. We shouldn't be giving it away. I don't think that that's a necessity. I can't help it that they've been mismanaged or misfunctions, or however you want to describe it, because from my standpoint, I don't live there. I live here in Avon Lake. And I've had the right and the privilege to choose Avon Lake. And yet I don't understand why we want to bail out LARCO. So go back to talk about Sergeant De Sunzo. Because he still hasn't been punished, reprimanded, nothing's happened in regards to the tickets with Mr. Phillips. The mayor said at the last meeting before break that, oh, it was a mistake, it was an honest mistake. We were telling them not to do the state code, and we needed to do the city code. Well, we were told that that was the case. We were told that there was a meeting that they stressed that. Guess what? Nobody has a minute from that meeting. Nobody has a roll call from that meeting. That meeting never happened and never existed. It's a fallacy. It's a cover-up again. I'm tired of this. This city is so corrupt, it's ridiculous. And the law enforcement is the prime culprit. As I've said 100 times, there's nothing worse than a criminal with a badge. And yet we keep going on. We can't get emails back from the Secretary of State in regards to this matter. I wonder why that is? Because they're going to get involved? There could be criminal issues with them? I can't believe this continues. And someday, y'all pay.
Anybody else want to come forward on any topic? Okay, we're going to move on then. The very first item on our agenda is building a utilities committee with Ms. Gentry.
So we have a resolution to discuss the work session item. The resolution is in support of the creation of the Central Lake Erie Regional Water Reclamation District. Do you want me to go ahead and read the whole resolution, or should we just?
Please, no.
No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. No, you don't need to read it. You may want to point out the points that you think are the most important. You could also call the consultant, Mr. McMahon, up.
So, Mr. McMahon, do you want to come and give us a summary of of the resolution?
So, thank you. The resolution, really boiled down, it just provides a lot of the background that we've already discussed, what the information is available, the process, how we got.
Gentlemen, can you take your conversation outside, please? Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. McMahon.
The primary point of the the resolution is simply for the city of Avon Lake to declare itself a petitioner, so we could go forward that process. It's not even a final commitment on any final agreement or anything. All the agreements, frankly, and we talked about letters of intent are draft, but the whole point of the resolution is to set up, you know, that the city elects to, why it would want to be a petitioner and continue this process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to point out that this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure? The very end, Ms. Gentry?
Yes. And I I maintain my thoughts on the emergencies, but that this resolution is hereby declared to be an emergency measure, the emergency being the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare of the public. Therefore, this resolution shall be in force and effect from immediately after the passage and approval by the mayor.
And that's our definition of emergency. It's not a medical emergency, it's not a weather emergency. It simply means it's going to go into effect immediately. So Mr. McMahon has spoken about the law of intent, the Cooperative Service Agreement. Okay, I'm sorry, it's totally different. They were connected in my file. That's why I thought that you were together. Sorry, sir. I'm all done.
Yeah, I know. What I would invite, actually, instead of going, like, I don't have a presentation to go through all these.
No.
I heard the gentleman at the end, too, express the gullibility. But what I would invite is any questions, either tonight or otherwise, on the letters of intent. So, you know, as earlier, Mr. Shamir raised a lot of great questions, things we see this process as, us being able to respond to anything that you have, so I'm open for questions, but I don't have a presentation to go through each of those.
I see your hand, Mr. Shamir. I have a question for Ms. Gentry. I see your hand, Mr. Cause. So your intent is to have three readings?
The intent was to have three readings, yes.
Very good. Mr. Shamir?
What is driving this emergency? I mean, we discussed a timeframe, but whose timeframe is this? And what is driving that timeframe? That is my first question, and then I've got a follow-up, if that's okay, if I could understand.
The emergency, I understand your rules make your ordinances and resolutions effective 90 days after after they're passed, correct?
30 days.
No, 30 days. So there's three readings, and 30 days after they pass is a normal, it goes into effect normally. If it's an emergency, then it goes into effect immediately after the mayor and I sign them.
Okay. So thank you for that clarification. Our understanding was, with an emergency, that we'd be in position then to give notice on the public hearing sooner instead of after 30 days, or, or, you know, not to force the schedule, but we have to give notice, and we want to give notice as soon as possible, and establish that public hearing to be able to get more comment out there. We would like to file this before the end of the year, in part because of the feasibility study is based on 2024, 2025 budgets. And that information, we would prefer not to have the, you know, the court get something that might be a little dated for the public to get, anything that might be stale if this rolls far into 2026. That was the idea. Because there are statutory requirements for two weeks' notice for the public hearing, and then four weeks' notice that the court would give whenever it sets a final date, we're looking just to expedite that. It's just a declaration that you're a petitioner.
So if I may follow that up, so I don't see that as an emergency to health, safety, and welfare. To me, that is a scheduling requirement that is set by you guys. Now, the reason I ask for the NPVs, because you have developed your model based on budgets. But I need to understand, as a person, when I'm looking at this data, how was the the assets looked at and what those assets, how were they evaluated, and what costs they were assigned, and what the model looks as that evaluation was done? So I also want to make sure that there's a clear understanding that at least this councilperson doesn't feel comfortable with this agreement as it sits, with the purchase and the lack of supermajority for the for the entity that is bringing in the majority of the assets. So thank you very much, Council President.
And if I could respond before we bring up the floor. So, Mr. Shamir, Section 7 is what you're referring to about the resolution being declared an emergency passage due to the public, immediate preservation of public health, safety, and welfare. Anytime you deal with sanitary reclamation, that is for the public safety and welfare and health. And that's that's the reason to move this forward for that.
Madam President?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't think that there will be any direct impact of this project on the public health, safety, or welfare. The project is a future project. Operations, unless I, unless Avon Lake Regional Water is having an issue with financing or something else, which I don't know about, I don't think there is any public health, safety, or welfare pushing this program forward.
There is from Eaton and the package plant. It is failing. And right now, the outfall is going into a creek. Would you like to speak to that, please?
That is that is true. I, you know, we leave it to council and to the city, your law director and all, to figure out whether this constitutes an emergency or not. And we will proceed according to however you figure that out. You're right, there are, you know, we want to be timely with all this. There are important things. We do think it's necessary. We think this regional entity can deliver things that can't be done just by the parties by themselves. But how you deal with and whether you declare this an emergency in your ordinance is entirely up to you.
Thank you.
It is going to go three readings. It's not like it's being passed prior to the.
Right, it's correct. And also, one of the things that's unusual, if I can get Tony Coyne for, you know, like, regional water.
Go ahead, Mr. Coyne.
And lose lose presentation. It is going to three readings anyway. And keep in mind, this petition that we're filing is with a court that's going to oversee it. And this judge, depending on how he handles it, he could he could actually inquire about somebody to advise him on how he makes a decision on creating it. So there are plenty of guardrails in how this would proceed. And, you know, Councilman Shamir, we're going to respond to some of your your questions, because they were good questions. We want to make sure that Avon Lake Regional Water is going to be better off when this is done, just like the city will be better off when this gets completed.
And I would just, that's to my point. And Mr. Shamir, myself, Mr. Duwanzik, we had the opportunity to meet this afternoon and talk about several items. And the the process that we're asking for right now is is to be a petitioner, to create the entity. And we we had a very healthy discussion, I think, today, and I appreciate Mr. Shamir's input. And as Mr. McMahon said, these are all draft agreements. These are all going to have to come back to the Board of Municipal Utilities for for their their approval. Any sale of any assets that, you know, a lease agreement that includes a sale has to then come to council to dispose of, just like when we acquire property. So there are several more steps to this. This is the first step.
Mr. Zuber?
I was going to say the exact same thing. We're going to have three readings on that. This is six weeks. Plus, this week is seven weeks. The technicality of it being an emergency measure, so it goes into effect within 30 days, is to move the process forward. There's still plenty of other processes that are going to go forward after that that we can weigh in on. I mean, the fact that it's an emergency or not, to me, after three readings, really makes no difference.
Thank you. Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I want to go back to the summary of process on this that we talked about earlier. And I'm a little confused on all of this. And I specifically want to do this with the thought of one of the questions that was brought up by Mr. Shamir on representation on the board, the three-person board. So if that was an issue that So, if that was an issue that members of city council wanted to look at and have some discussions on changing that representation, which I would probably agree that that council would have the authority to have that discussion and change it or modify it if the majority thought so, that's not set in stone. If that was the case, how does that affect the vote that's already been taken place by Lorraine County Commissioners? I mean, are we locked into whatever the preconceived proposal was on this? Because the Commissioners already voted on this. If there's any other thing that the council decides that, hey, we think that this should be tweaked or modified to represent this or that, whatever that may be, because we haven't even heard from the public on this yet, how locked in are we if we create this petition, plan of operation, approve it per the resolution, then we hold a public meeting and get feedback from the public? And at that point, is it too late at that point? Where's, what kind of control do we have at this point if there's something that council looks at? And right now, there's nothing in writing that says this, other than the presentation, that members of council might object to? Because I saw some heads going like this when we were talking about the supermajority. I think that there's a point there. I'm not sure how you would do that, but I think it at least merits more discussion on that point alone. So, I guess my question is, how locked in are we on what was presented tonight? And how much flexibility do we have? And if this resolution passes as being presented, what does that do to the whole process?
That's great questions, right?
It's a lot of questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions. But that's, I'll say honestly, the statute doesn't really contemplate that in detail. I think I would go back to the basics that there's a plan of operation that's in draft form that, you know, the resolution speaks to. If that plan is materially changed, I think the Commissioners would have to review that and probably pass a different resolution, right? Parties that, if they're going to be joint petitioners, have to have a meeting of the minds as to what they're going to present to the court. If, after, say, a public hearing, and I've never seen this actually happening, but after a public hearing, there's certain comments and there may be disagreement as to how to go forward with that. As Mr. Coyne said, the court is the ultimate one who's the guardrail to decide that. So, if one or more people, including petitioners, showed up at the court and said, "We don't like where this is going," the court's not going to like that, right? It's not going to be something the court's going to be comfortable implementing, right? So, in terms of being locked in, you know, parties have to have a meeting of the minds. You want to go to court in the united front, the court's going to want to see that among all the participants in order to go through its process. I guess that's the broad brush of something that the statute doesn't speak to directly.
Okay. We'll have many more discussions on this, but I just wanted to get that. Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Zuber?
And I think that's a key phrase, Mr. Cause. We'll have plenty of more discussion on this particular matter.
Mr. Shamir?
I agree that there's going to be plenty more discussions. But I think if we have clarity upfront, then we're going to have a lot less heartburn and heartache at the end. So, you know, if we're into a negotiation, I don't think anything that has been put forth locks us in until we agree and approve. And once we agree and approve, then we're locked in. So, if we can clarify and get clarity on those issues, I think everyone here would be more than happy with a regionalization. Thank you.
Ms. Shamir, you, I'm sorry, Ms. Gentry, you opened it. It's yours to close.
Yes, so, I did want to, I agree with Mr. Shamir. I'm very concerned about our, the percentage of representation. And if we can get that addressed, I think the rest of this is, would sail through. But I do have similar concerns as Mr. Shamir, and I don't know if that's something that we can get addressed before we have our council meeting next week to get updates on that. And I don't know what the impact is for the entire process, because if we change that, anything in that, my assumption is you have to go back to Regional Water Board and to the Commissioners.
And if I could comment about processes, as you see on this resolution, okay? If there is any changes, it will have an "R", I mean, just like we do with all of our other ones. We can continue to process it through our three readings. And if there's a change, we can add an "R" there for a change.
And once we get it approved, then it has to go back to the other two boards.
That's correct.
Petitioners, and maybe those, they wouldn't agree. We'll have to work through that.
I'm not going to speculate on anything.
Understood. Understood.
Thank you. Any last words?
No, thank you. Honestly, you talk about clarity upfront, and it's been our entire goal, it's why we spent years on this. We, and we put it out so that we can have feedback. We want meeting of the minds, we want clarity, we want transparency. So, that's been our goal. Appreciate all the comments tonight and look forward to much more conversation and to see how this can work.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gentry, for taking this on. Okay, the next one that we are going to be discussing is going to be Communications, Environmental and Recreational Programming Committee with Mr. Shamir.
Yes, we have the U.S. Department of Agriculture White Tail Deer Management Plan Cooperative Agreement with the USDA. Now, if I may turn that over to Mr. Liskovik.
Yes, so, what we've discussed, yes, no, I did catch both of those in there. When we had discussed, obviously, at the committee meeting, was the 2025-26 culling program. USDA has been managing our deer population for a previous number of years with good results. What's presented, what they're presenting for us this year is an agreement not to exceed $30,425.23 to manage for this season, looking at an approximate 40, 40 tags right now. We do have the ability to go up to 60 within the agreement. But 40 has been where we're kind of at in discussion with ODNR, Representative Two. More than likely, with our trends, have been tracking in a kind of a downward slide. They would not be inclined to give us more than 40 tags unless we can demonstrate a need that we need more. And that can happen in the field, based on USDA's observations. They talk very closely with ODNR. So, that's what we're looking to get moved through, so we can get on their schedule and get planned and get everything moving forward.
If I may ask the question, Mr. Liskovik, when do you need this contract executed?
It would be preferential to have it as soon as council wants to. I know ODNR has been bugging me already, because they're already working on schedules for culling season. I know last year, I think we were in early October by the time it finally got passed. But the sooner the better for them, just so that they can plan.
So, would this be an emergency?
I would prefer to do that, but if it's the will to go two readings, we can do that too. But I would like to move forward.
So, you're going to have suspension of the rule?
Yes.
Okay, on your second reading?
On the second reading. Mr. Zuber?
Mr. Zuber?
Yeah. In looking at this, it says, "shall become effective October 1st."
And I know that in past years, Mr. Liskovik, you're right, we almost didn't make it onto their schedule because of there being a small group of people that are implementing this. And there's a growing number of communities that want them at their sites. And they're not going to go from Cincinnati to Rocky River, down to Genetian Hudson, over to Avon Lake. They're going to, you know, group us together. Ms. Gentry?
So, I've had a resident ask me about this program. And while they're reluctantly in agreement that we need to do it, they wanted to know if we've ever, if we had investigated birth control for deer? And, Mr. Shamir, I don't know if you had an opportunity to.
Actually, I followed up with that question. I forwarded that to Terry Robinson, and I think he answered the question.
Oh, did he? I missed that, okay.
So, they have looked at birth control for deer at, within Cuyahoga, and it was not a very successful issue because of migratory aspects of deer and a lot of other aspects. But I think he sent that email to everyone.
Okay, I'll go check.
And if I could continue, if I could continue, what happens with the birth control also is that they found that when it fails, okay? The next generation has very weak bones in their legs. And Mr. Robinson's also on the tree commission, and we've discussed this. Mr. Liskovik, do you have any additional information?
Yeah, actually, I believe, I think it's the City of Euclid that has tried to utilize that program in the past. And they spoke about it, you know, at the end, it's, you're making a sizable investment to grab these deer, sedate them, do what needs to be done, and then release them. With, you do that in year one, and in year two, as Councilman Shamir mentioned, due to migratory patterns, they may wander into another city. Granted, they are tagged and tracked to an extent. But you can get into a situation where you treat them year one, and in year two, you're looking at pulling the plug on it. So, it becomes a big investment to make, and I did not see any real benefit financially. Plus, you do not, what you don't, you know, what you do is you prevent future generations, but you're not solving the current problem, which residents complaints of damaged browse and stuff like that to their landscapes and stuff like that, DVAs and whatnot.
Mr. Cause, was your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, from a historical standpoint, about a dozen years or so when this program was first put in, the culling program, we did vet that.
Okay.
So, we did have meetings on that, we had residents that brought that forward. The environmental committee at the time, council at the time, did have discussions on that. So, it was looked at, and to the points that Mr. Liskovik's make, it was not selected as a way to go forward.
Thank you.
And during that process, there are smaller animals that have, are then exposed to the hormon urine? And it actually affects other types of animals too? Yes?
I know that Bay and Avon Lake have worked very hard on this program. It's one more efficient deer culling program they're having in the Cuyahoga County. I know that, because I was involved in the thing, as far as looking at all different other possibilities, because right away, they're killing deer. But the amount of deer that have been, you know, in that area, not only Avon Lake, but Bay Village, this has been a very serious program they've looked at over the years to try to be as efficient and as protective as possible.
Thank you for your input, everybody. Anything else? Do you have anything else that you want to discuss?
Nope. I would just recommend, since this is an annual contract and it's with the USDA, maybe looking at putting in place a multi-year renewable contract if possible.
I think the only thing right now is because they're still monitoring as far as commitment to the program. Last year's contract, if you recall, was almost double. So, there's a lot of fluctuation in that. We can definitely talk to them about that, I just don't know if that would be a realm of possibility.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shamir. Ms. Gentry, I failed to ask if you had anything else that you wanted to bring in from your committee?
No, nothing at this time, thank you.
Anything down here? Okay. Then we're going to move on now to Public Service Committee. And we have something in front of us, that is the right-of-way appraisals and the acquisition on Lake Road, State Route 83 West, this time from 83 to Sheffield Lake. And there's two contract proposals in front of us. One has to do with the right-of-way acquisition services with a company by the name of O.R. Colan, C.O.L.A.N. Associates, and they're out of Fairview Park. And this would be a turnkey right-of-way acquisition process. And council, if you turn to your breakout, you can see how they have itemized their services from the appraisal side. There would be 80 different appraisals that they would be performing, title researches. There would be 70, let's see, two, three, four, five. There'd be 70 title research that would be performed. You could have 105 negotiations, 70 closings, and there would be a total of 22 times that they would be having units of copying and recording fees for a grand total of $208,580. Mr. Liskovik, is there something that you'd like to add to this discussion?
I would like to make a point there.
Thank you.
So, the acquisition services presented to us for O.R. Colan, though, at the end of the day, is for 35 total parcels that are impacted by the project.
So, if you look at, which is in your, kind of that first line where they talk about project management, line G, that's your total parcel count there. A lot of the other stuff that you had listed off related to additional search services, maybe on a particular parcel. But yeah, that's, that would be that, on that page one of this.
Would you please then update what the amount of the proposal is, sir?
The amount of their proposal is $208,580.
It's still the same that I read off?
Yes, yes. And by way of comparison, when we went out for acquisition services for the Eastern Project, which had approximately 88 parcels, that contract agreement, which was with Trans Systems, was for $465,000 and some change. So, if you're looking at kind of the numbers comparison, how does that compare to what we've done in the past? That gives you a little reference with regards to that.
Thank you. Any discussion, yes? Mr. Arnold?
No, just, I have a question for John. Are we still on schedule for sidewalks getting put in on Lake Road? I tell people it's going to happen, but they don't believe me.
Yeah, we're still on schedule. We've got, obviously, we're in the right-of-way acquisition phase for the East Project. We do have a number of residents that are unresponsive to the process. And they'll, the next step with that would be what they call an appropriations case, where we actually take them to court for the acquisition of the land that's needed to do that. That's the, kind of the biggest thing when you go through the whole right-of-way acquisition component, is the willingness or unwillingness of residents and, obviously, understanding the process and moving things along. Sometimes it is not a quick process. But the project will continue to move forward with scheduled construction. We've got a meeting with ODOT later this month, quarterly meeting. So, we'll have some updates coming back at the end of this month, early October.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Shamir?
Just wondering what the tender process was like. Was this floated? Was it a single source? Were there any other companies?
We put out a letter of interest for, through ODOT's process. So, this is, this follows federal slash ODOT 99. So, we got solicit letters of interest, it goes out. Actually, ODOT has a, an advertisement site, per se, when you're doing these. So, all the vendors that are interested have a chance to look at it, they know to go there to look at it. We had a number of vendors, I don't remember off the top of my head, but we did have a number of vendors for, I think it was, I think it was three vendors for right-of-way acquisition and two vendors for appraisal service, submit letters of interest. At that point, there's a scoring matrix that has gone through, reviewed, tabulated, and then a selection was made for each vendor to solicit then the proposals for service.
Who did the evaluation on that matrix?
Myself, Engineer Howard, and then Engineer Larson with Regional Water.
Can we get copies of the documentation as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Liskovik, what is your need for this to go forward with the council?
As mentioned, obviously, right-of-way acquisition takes, can take a lot of time. So, the more time we have is always more advantageous for us. It would be preferred to be able to do it in one reading. To keep moving along, we have to have right-of-way cleared by July of 2026.
That's in one here?
Yeah. A little bit less.
Mr. Cause?
Thank you. Mr. Liskovik, you mentioned a big number that this was going to total. Can you talk about the reimbursement of this?
Sure. As far as the project goes, we do have safety funds from ODOT to fund this project. It's a 90-10 project right now, so they're reimbursing back 90% of the cost as we're going through this process. So, it's, you know, we moved this forward, but then we do see reimbursement on the total sums.
Thank you. Thank you.
Therefore, this is in this year's budget, the $20,000?
Yes, yes. The, yes, both were budgeted earlier this year as part of acquisition.
Mr. Ebert?
If I could, the acquisition process is, after the appraisal is given and talked to the residents, that they say, "No, I want more money," what happens is that appraisal amount is deposited with the court. There's a petition for acquisition. That goes forward. And that money sits in that account until the court makes a decision on that. It's a process that's done by statute.
Mr. Zubert, thank you. Mr. Zubert?
I have no problem passing this next week on first reading.
First reading, thank you. Okay, we're going to move along now to the second part of this. And there's a proposal in front of us for review services. This would be the appraisal review service. They also perform consultation, litigation support, or expert witness testimony. And it is with MW, which is Marchand and Wood Appraisal Group out of Toledo, Ohio. And, Mr. Liskovik, again, I have the total amount being $27,625. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And they need to go side, hand by hand. So, this, too, would be first reading-
Correct.
-suspension of the rule, emergency passage. Any comment from council members on this one? Mr. Shamir?
I would just request that we get the matrix for these folks as well. And it's just for me to get an understanding of what the evaluation process looks like. Thank you.
No, not a problem. I was going to do both for you anyways.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along, we're now going to go to legislation. The third reading is ordinance number 25-134. Any questions on this one? This has to do with the municipal tree ordinance. This would be the third reading. Okay, moving right along. The next one will be ordinance number 25-136. Mr. Smith is sponsoring this, and it has to do with the vacation proportion of Shields Avenue Electric Boulevard rights away declaring an emergency. Any comments? Okay, now we're going to go to second readings, ordinance number 25-139. This ordinance has to do with the Rules of Civil Service Commission declaring an emergency. Any comments, Mr. Smith?
We've discussed it before. It has to do with the lateral candidate entries, as well as the need to disclose prior disciplinary problems.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. The next ordinance for second reading is ordinance number 25-140. It has to do with entering into a medical direction services agreement for the tactical emergency medical services and related training to the Eastern Lorain County Emergency Response Team, which we call ELERT, comprised of the city of Avon, the city of Avon Lake, and the city of North Ridgeville, and University Hospital in declaring an emergency. Any comments, Mr. Cause?
Yeah, thank you. I will not be here at, for Monday's meeting with the second reading on this. Ms. Gentry was not here last week when I introduced this. So, if Mr. Smith is comfortable with it, as a member of the committee, if he wouldn't mind handling both 25-140 and then 25-143, the resolution after this, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Jeff, if you want to call me, or the mayor can answer questions as well, too.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you for letting us know, Mr. Cause. Any other questions on this particular one? Okay, we're going to move on then to second reading, Resolution Number 25-143. It's a resolution authorizing the use of any unneeded and obsolete vehicle for training purposes and subsequent sale of such vehicle for scrap. Mr. Cause, any comments on this one? Anybody else? Okay. Any miscellaneous business and announcements? Mr. Shamir?
I do have a question. I had a resident reach out to me and ask if the flock traffic camera data is ever sold to third parties. And I thought this would probably be the best venue to get the answer and submit my answer to them.
Mr. Mayor?
My answer would be no, but I'll find out for sure.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else? Is it your name? Is your hand up, Ms. Gentry?
Yes. I just wanted to announce that Ward Three, I'm having a Ward Three meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the library.
6:00 PM at the library. Okay, very good. Anybody else? Mr. Mayor, anything else to close out?
Nope. Good.
Okay. At this point, we are now adjourned. It is 13 after 9:00. See you next week. Thank you.